That's right. All right, everybody, it's 6:00 o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, February 16, 2022, formal meeting of Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For attendance, I'll note that all commissioners are present at the meeting. The next item on the agenda is public discussion on any item that's not on the agenda. So if there's a member of the public who'd like to address the commission, now is your opportunity. Is there anything anybody would like to address to the commission? Seeing no one approaching, we should go on to item number four, case number SUB21-0013. The location is south of North Scott Boulevard and west of North First Avenue. This is an application for a preliminary plat of Hickory Trail Estates, a 48.75-acre subdivision with one residential lot and one outlot to be dedicated to the city for public open space. And Parker, is it you?
Yep.
All right. Welcome. Thank you.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Parker Walsh, the new associate planner for the city. And as the chair mentioned, I'll be going over the property, the preliminary plat for Hickory Trail Estates. Shown here is an aerial of the 48.75-acre property for the proposed Hickory Trail Estates development. Next, we have the zoning map reflecting the rezoning to OPD RS5, as well as how it fits in with the surrounding areas. Recent approvals include the rezoning to low-density, single-family residential with a planned development overlay, as well as the preliminary OPD Sensitive Areas Development Plan. Rezoning conditions include the required submission of a landscape plan, which was received by staff. Additional requirements include the construction of a trail connection to an existing trail south of the property, as well as construction of an eight-foot-wide sidewalk extending from the eastern property line to North First Avenue. Taking a look at the preliminary plat shows Lot 1, the proposed development site for Hickory Trail Estates, a senior living facility, as well as Outlot A, the proposed 38.98 acres of dedicated land to the city. Taking a closer look at Lot 1, we can see the proposed trail system connecting to the existing trail, as well as the sidewalk extending from the property line to North First Avenue. Additionally, we have Lot A, the .92 acres of dedicated right-of-way. Subdivision code does discourage cul-de-sacs, but due to Outlot A being dedicated in its entirety, the portion of land where through-street access would be allowed has been removed. This design is also consistent with what was approved during the rezoning process in the preliminary OPD plan. Next, here's a better look at Outlot A. Outlot A contains most of the sensitive features on the property and, as proposed, will remain unimpacted. All 38.98 acres will be dedicated to the city as neighborhood open space. And in the future, Outlot A will be rezoned to Neighborhood Public Zone as an addition to Hickory Hill Park. The comprehensive plan allows for two-to-eight dwelling units per acre, as well as on the northern section of the property, eight-to-16 dwelling units per acre. This is not applicable because the senior living facility bedrooms don't meet the dwelling unit definition and therefore will not be calculated into the density of the site. The comprehensive plan also encourages preservation of sensitive areas, guiding development away from sensitive areas, conservation design in areas with sensitive features, and interconnected systems, open space with wide sidewalks and trails. The images shown represent the Northeast District. This is the vision for what the district plan has laid out here on the right, which includes single-family residential, small apartment buildings, neighborhood commercial, and also encourages cul-de-sacs when appropriate. The following images will be from the approved Sensitive Areas Development Plan, starting with wetlands and the stream corridors. There are two wetlands with 100-foot buffers located on Outlot A. There are also two streams, each with 30-foot stream corridor and a 50-foot stream corridor buffer to each side of the stream. As shown in this image, the proposed construction limits do not show any impact to these features. Next is slopes coming in at .49 acres, or 7% of all critical slopes proposed to be impacted. All protected slopes are located on Outlot A and will be unimpacted. Last, we have woodlands, approximately 4.8 acres, or 16%, proposed to be impacted, leaving approximately 81% of woodlands as preserved, which is well above the 50% requirement. Stormwater management for the subject property will be provided via an existing downstream detention basin in Hickory Hill Park. Public work staff has reviewed and approved the preliminary stormwater management plans. The role of the commission would be to determine if this preliminary plat complies with the subdivision regulations and other applicable code, as well as if it complies with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of SUB21-0013, an application submitted by Nelson Development LLC for a preliminary plat of the Hickory Trail Estates subdivision, a one-lot and one-outlot 48.75-acre subdivision located south of North Scott Boulevard and west of North First Avenue. If approved, the final plat approval of Hickory Trail Estates subdivision via City Council would need to be done, as well as the final Sensitive Areas Development Plan and site plan via staff review and the building permits via staff review. That concludes the presentation, and I now turn it over to the commission.
Thank you, Parker. Does any member of the commission have a question for Parker? Are the staff members on this application?
So the lot where the Nelson Building is going to be built, that's going to be residential, not commercial?
For the senior living facility?
Yeah.
Correct. It'll just be right here, senior living facility, no commercial.
Okay. I just, I guess, yeah, I thought a building like that was considered commercial.
Any other questions? All right, this, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So this is a public hearing. If the applicant or the applicant's representative, they'd like the opportunity to address the commission on this application, or on this application for the preliminary plat, I should say.
Good evening, Brian Belk, Akxiom Consultants. Really just here to answer any questions you may have. I think Parker did a great job running through this. I think you're all, mostly you're probably fairly familiar with this through the process it's taken. So hopefully we're to a result where everybody's pretty happy. But yeah, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Happy to do so.
Does anybody have any questions for Brian?
Well, I would just ask him to talk a little bit about, you know, one of the concerns that came up from one group of people during all of the zoning conversations was about traffic. And, you know, when I see the amount of parking that there, that's there, it looks like it's more visitor, visitor parking than resident parking. And it was, I don't know, I think I got the impression in one of your earlier presentations of this that, that most of the residents there would not be expected to have vehicles. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, that is correct. And right now, the site plan as we have it is 89 parking stalls, which matches exactly with what the requirement is by code of 89 parking stalls. Yeah, just to give you a little more, I guess, idea or definition on the building itself. So there's assistant living, which would be the north wing. There's, what, they have 68 beds of standard assistant living, which is like a kitchenette in the, in the unit. And then there's 34 units of what they call premier assistant living, which has a full kitchen in those. In the middle, there's a commons area that has, you know, some of the eating area and all those things. And then on the south wing is memory care. The memory care has 32 units on that. So, yeah, and then looking at that, obviously some staff in regards to providing parking for that, but otherwise it's based on those bed counts as well.
So that 89 is the minimum?
Yes, that is correct. That's correct.
So do you have the assisted living, the premier assisted living, and the memory care? Is there any independent living?
No.
Okay. And I only ask that because that really clarifies the need for parking.
Sure. Yep, yep.
Right.
Yep.
Brian, timing-wise, what's ideal? Like, when do you plan to start construction ideally and all that?
Yeah. As of right now, I think the intent is to start on the civil side of things and the site work in July. It is right now, we're going through the design review process with the architect. We actually had a good meeting last week with city staff on that. We are looking to, I believe, submit or resubmit on that in about two weeks. They did, Nelson did have as part of their purchase agreement that they're still going through the, the fact that they had to provide to the seller, the site plan and final plat prior to us taking it to the city. So it's in their hands right now. I think they have like a 15-day due diligence or review on that. And then assuming everything goes through there, then we'd be looking to submit the site plan and the full design review with the architectural plans from there. And then, yeah, I think their intent then is, I believe, closing would be for them in June, and then looking to start right away there in July.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question, and this might be more for Ann or Sarah, but the, what we believe to be the development at this stage, it can't change greatly, like height can't change?
That's correct. As Brian mentioned, the project still needs to go through design review and site plan review, so there may be some minor changes for code compliance, but the height will not change.
All right. Any further questions for Brian? Seeing none? Oh, go ahead, Maria.
So there is here on...
Maria, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. So it's here that you're providing a trail to Hickory Hill Park?
Yes.
But I didn't see it on the drawings.
Yeah, it might be hard to see on the preliminary plat drawing, so it's in a light gray, but you are correct. So if you're looking at the preliminary plat on the, what would actually be the southeast corner of the building, you'll see going to the south off of Hickory Trail Road there, there is a, it's kind of a lighter gray. It's hard to see. Yeah, there's a note there, connect new eight-foot-wide trail to existing. Yep, yeah, it's hard to see for sure.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody else like to address the commission on this application? Seeing no one approach, we'll close the public hearing. Could I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Townsend, second by Nolte. Discussion. I'll start off. I'm very happy this is going through. I'm quite honest, I'm saddened that we couldn't get this opportunity to add additional housing stock to Iowa City, but you just take what you have. I think this is a positive addition, and I'm very happy to vote yes on this. Any further discussion from anybody?
I'd just like to say I'm pleased that we don't have an audience tonight like we have been, have had. So we must be doing something right.
I will say that I like the plan exactly as it is.
Bless you. Anyone else have any discussion or comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved, 7 to 0. Thank you, Brian. Next item on the agenda is item number five, consideration of meeting minutes of February 2, 2022. Does anybody have any major additions or corrections to the minutes? If there are no major additions or corrections, there's a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Sines, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is approved unanimously. Now, item number six, planning and zoning information. Ann?
Just a few updates. At last night's city council meeting, the city council approved the rezoning at 421 East Market Street to mixed-use designation. They also approved the preliminary plat for the IWV Slough Howard Plat and the Good Neighbor Policy. So that's official now.
Great.
We will be updating some application guides with the new information and getting that on our website soon. I also received an inquiry from Commissioner Sines about some recent legislation that's being proposed at the state level, so I just wanted to give an update on that. I will say that the American Planning Association Iowa Chapter has been monitoring legislation very closely, and we also have a lobbyist. The city obviously has a lobbyist, but so does APA Iowa, and they have been testifying at hearings.
Do you have the bill number on that?
Yeah.
I was looking for it today, and I just got sidetracked and didn't.
It's House Study Bill 682 and Senate Study Bill 3132. And it would be an amendment to the zoning section of the state code. And I'm just going to read it here. A city shall not enforce an ordinance adopted under this section if four-fifths of the lots in the land area covered by the ordinance do not, do not conform with the ordinance. It's, it's very vague, and depending on how it's interpreted, it's believed that it could invalidate some zoning regulations, all of the city's zoning ordinance, depending on how it's applied. So the APA Iowa has been opposing this, has been testifying and submitting letters as planners throughout the state. It's been passing through committees. My understanding is that it might not pass as is, but it may be tweaked. Time will tell, I guess.
Well, the funnel is Friday, so they have to have it out of committee by Friday.
The committee meeting was yesterday.
Subcommittee or full committee?
Full committee.
Full committee. It did come out of the committee meeting.
So who's driving this, and what's kind of their rationale? Do you know?
This, this came from the governor's office, is my understanding, and I think it's...
The owners are driving. Sorry.
It's an attempt at deregulation to maybe spur additional development in terms of COVID recovery, is, I think, is the explanation.
Can you clarify? I'm a little confused as to what the four-fifths piece of...
I cannot.
Okay.
Or can I?
Honest answer. I like it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's very confusing, and honestly, there, we're going to have, if something like this gets passed, we're going to have to have lots of conversations with the city attorney's office on how to move forward.
Yeah. Mind-boggling to me.
Yeah. If this makes it through the first funnel, then I'd certainly would ask that we, as a commission, make a recommendation on this and maybe draft a letter.
I would support that 100%.
Yeah.
Stuff that comes from Iowa City gets a lot of attention in Des Moines.
Well, see, that's the whole fear, because sometimes it almost is enough to make other people want to vote yes for it.
It probably wrote it for us. I believe there are other bills that have been passed that were maybe written for us and Ames, but, you know.
Agreed, though. We should, yeah.
Sounds like the Wild, Wild West to me.
I just think we have to. Boy, people don't like, very resistant to some of the applications we get here. Can you imagine if they had zero control of what their neighbors did of a building? I can't even imagine how upset people would be.
Oh, I know.
But, and this week is, I believe Friday is the first funnel, so if it made it through a full committee in one house, and does it have to make it through the other committee, the committee in the other chamber also, just the one?
One committee.
Yep. Because unless it's an appropriations or a Ways and Means Bill, if it doesn't make through the funnel Friday, it's dead for the season session. So anyway, if you would, Ann, keep us posted, because I would really like to put on the agenda if it does look like there's any legs to this, so we can take a stand.
Well, I, I mean, I think, I mean, we do meet every two weeks. I was thinking a meeting once a month might not be a timely way to take that. And I think that, I mean, would it take a motion, which I know isn't on the agenda, to just direct the chair to work with the staff and the city attorney to write a letter in, not in favor, opposed to this measure if it moves forward? Can we direct that of staff and the chair?
You know, I've honestly never considered that kind of question. We haven't had something like this come up.
I mean, I just think if it's going to, if they're going to be debating it someplace in the next two weeks, maybe it needs to...
Yeah, it's got to be more timely about it.
We're still in active session. You could make, you could move to...
Well, it's not, it hasn't been on the agenda. Is that allowed?
But this would not be something that the public would weigh in on either.
True.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's probably okay since you're not...
Well, we could certainly draft a letter and at the next meeting approve the letter.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of how I thought, yeah.
And have it on the agenda.
Yeah, then public can see it.
That should be...
I second Susan's motion.
Well, actually, I don't think we need a motion. I think it's just asking staff to prepare a letter on behalf of the commission and then put it on the next agenda and we'll approve the letter.
Yeah, I just hope that's timely enough.
Is that all right?
Yeah, I think it, two weeks. I was thinking we had to wait a month, but two weeks should be fine.
Oh, I think they've got big fish to fry. Their budget's going nowhere, so we got time.
Um, go ahead.
Was that on this topic?
Different topic.
Okay, I have a, you go ahead. I have a different topic to you.
I, this, this whole thing tonight reminded me of something we, we talked about a long time ago. You know, one of the, one of the things we ran into with this particular property was the, the differences between the neighborhood plan and the comprehensive plan, the neighborhood plan being quite old, the comprehensive plan being quite new, or much newer. And we've talked about a motion to, I think we've talked about maybe passing a motion or sending a recommendation to council that they look for a way to speed up the neighborhood plan, planning and revision process, and, and dedicate additional staff, time and resources to getting that done. If there was any interest in having that conversation, I personally am interested in having that conversation, but I'll leave it up to the, to the will of the commission.
Maybe at first off, Ann, is there any way we could just find out for the different district plans, how old they are, and which ones have a plan and doesn't have a plan? Maybe that'd be the first step.
Sure.
So we know for sure out of X number of plans, which ones don't exist. You know, there's a couple that don't have a plan. And then other ones, what are the oldest ones? So we could maybe pay most attention to those first.
Sure. I'm actually in the process of drafting a memo to the city manager that will get forwarded onto council related to the planning team's work plan and our priorities, mainly related to comprehensive planning and zoning code text amendments and the like. And so when that's finished, I can share it with the commission. And I think just, just to give you a preview, there are many things that we feel like we can do in a shorter turnaround, in a shorter timeframe, related to some code amendments related to housing and climate change, as well as some updates to plans for greenfield sites similar to what we did for the South District. So that's kind of our priority in the short term, but in the long term, I think we'd really like to overhaul the comprehensive plan and reevaluate, not just the comprehensive plan, but the district plans as part of that. So that's what we'll be sharing soon, and I'll keep the commission posted on that.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
My item was an inquiry and then maybe an update on, I recently, I think it was in the Gazette, read an article about the council is discussing interacting in a different way with people who speak at council. I mean, we follow the way they've done it in the past, which is people make comments and can ask questions, but we don't engage them in conversation during that period. And if the council, do you think the council is moving toward making that change? And if so, does that mean we would have to make that change too?
No.
Okay.
I mean, they have different, different agendas. You know, they have a public comment period. You know, I guess we invite that too, but it's more, they are adopting new rules for sort of decorum at the meetings, but as far as, you know, inviting conversation back and forth, we follow the Roberts Rules of Order, and those continue to govern unless you want to change your bylaws.
Yep.
So it makes sense to me, and it would be my advice to you to continue down that route. I think it
Right, right.
Creates a more orderly public meeting.
For instance, I think of the gentleman who was here at the last meeting, who was interested in something totally not on the agenda, and he made his comment and asked questions, but, you know, we should not, and we didn't, take time trying to answer his questions because he just sort of came out of, you know, left field and with a legitimate question, I'm sure, but not one that we were prepared to have a conversation about that night.
Right, right. No, I think at the council level, you know, like I said, they are going to be considering a resolution to adopt rules about sort of more what, what to do when people aren't following the rules, those sorts of things. So I think if you do want to take a look at your bylaws...
I'm, no, I'm comforted with your answer.
Okay.
I've written enough bylaws in my day. I don't, it's good to know they're there.
I feel like we've been very lucky, even if people have been very passionate. Most people have observed decorum and decency. I think it doesn't hurt, though, to maybe adopt some rules for if that ceases to happen, because public behavior has been escalating, and there's no reason to think we're going to be exempt from that. And so I feel like we should have something in place so that if we do have somebody who's just merely trying to disrupt, we have a mechanism to continue our business. Or, knock on wood, we've never had that problem yet, but it's escalating pretty quickly everywhere else in Johnson County, and I don't see why we'd be exempt from that. I hope we are.
But I would like to say that, I'll see if I can say it nicely, our chair has done a good job of keeping the meetings under control, and his henchman has also had a great, has done a great job of, of making that happen. Because we have had a few heated discussions.
Yes, we have.
And you two together have brought it back under control. And I'd like to commend the both of you.
I really appreciate that. But I think we just have to be realistic that we're, might be living on borrowed time for that.
Yeah. You're always so calm.
Zoom meetings are nice.
Well, they're nice until the people
Take over, yeah.
Take over.
Yeah.
And just, we could go all day. Trust me, I'm right in the middle of it, so.
I have one other question, and I guess it's something I've been thinking about, because I, I've been on the commission as long as I have. We get a lot of proposals in. Is there any way that we could get a report of those that have not been acted upon? I'm still wondering about the one off of Bermuda Road that's, nothing's been done. So, you know, I guess I'm just wondering, how many others are like that, where they've come in, they've taken up all our time, and then they don't act?
Which one are you talking about?
Foster.
Foster Road?
Yeah, Foster Road.
Oh, Foster Road, okay. So ones that have gone through council and received approvals but haven't moved forward.
And then approved, and then nothing has happened.
Yeah, I can provide an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
That'd be awesome.
That'd be great.
All right. Anything else? Great discussion, everybody. Thank you very much.
In two meetings now, then, from now is spring break. Just asking for a friend.
I know somebody. I know this friend.
So I'll be gone.
We will miss you. But we will soldier on mightily.
Maybe there won't be a meeting then. I'm hoping.
I will also be gone, Phoebe. But we, we could still make it happen on our end, too.
So Parker, you're going to be the dude, man.
All right. And Ann, could you also, at some point, give us, do vacations come through? They come through this department, vacation as in lot, land vacation. Could you give us an, yeah, I'm taking one next week, but it's not land-related. On, I just, every time I drive by on Kirkwood Boulevard and Keokuk, that, that sign that says vacation
Oh, yes.
proposal, I would love to hear what the heck that's about.
I can't even figure out where the alley is.
It's an old alley. It's an old alley there.
Yeah, you have a conflict on that one, Phoebe. I think that Yeah, you have a conflict on that one, Phoebe. I think that one will be coming to you on the next agenda.
Oh. Every time I drive by, I try to figure out where the alley was. Oh, it's behind the house, but it looks like a really long alley.
All right. Okay. All right.
I say nothing.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, a motion for adjournment?
Second?
I think Martin was first, for a motion by Martin, second by Townsend. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, it's approved, seven to zero.